Yes. I'm going to call the meeting in order at 7:30. We will call William Johnston.
Here.
Thomas Crapeno.
Here.
Lisa Crackler.
Here.
Phil Diorio is here. We also have President Town Attorney Stephen Kiley. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes from February 28, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple of hearings on the agenda tonight. The first is 73 Shore Road and 62 Sterns Point Road. Christina, read the notice for us here, please.
Hearing on the application of Anna Kaplan on behalf of the Pearlman Music Program, owner of 73 Shore Road and 65 Sterns Point Road, Shelter Island, New York, which is in Zone AA residential near Shore Overly District, and are more specifically described on the Suffolk County tax map at 700-13-2-31 and 700-13-2-31.1. The applicant is seeking a special permit to change their use to that of an educational institution, which is a permitted principal use in Zone AA with a VBA special permit for town code Section 133-7, District AAAD.
Is someone here to present? Please state your name for the record, Terrence.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Frank Isler. I'm an attorney in Riverhead, Smithville, Stone. I represent the Pearlman's on this app- the Pearlman Project on this application officially, and also the Pearlman's. And I'd like to begin with introducing just some of our key players of Pearlman's. Toby Pearlman is the president of the project and also the founder. Her husband, the well-known Maestro. Mr. Pearlman is here with us as well. Anna Kaplan is the director, day-to-day and operational of the program. And we have our architect, Lise Skolnick, is here as well. If there are any questions that come up, he may need to address. So, that having all been said, the application is for a special permit to have the Pearlman Music Project get a special permit to be an educational institution. Under the statute, the Code 133-72, which we're under here, there are two criteria in the code that you have to meet to be eligible to apply for this and obtain this project by the special permit. The first is your buildings have to be more than 50 feet from the road or property lines, which unquestionably, we meet that requirement of the setbacks. And the second criteria is you have to show that you're a nonprofit entity under the IRS and that you serve educational purposes. And the Pearlman Music Program is a 501(c)(3) corporation under the IRS as a charitable corporation. And in the papers we submitted as part of the application, we have our state filings when this corporation was incorporated some 30 years ago. Anyway, we have obtained the consent of the New York State Department of Education, which is in the file, as part of the nonprofit status that we have as an educational institution. We also have filed in our incorporation documents, and I'll do this briefly, what our purposes are as a corporation. And one of the purposes is, I'm just going to quote from it, "Providing educational and performance experience and opportunities for young musicians. Engage in a variety of artistic and musical activities, including concerts, lectures, master classes, workshops, and relevant related events." And lastly, "Provide educational and performance opportunities for young musicians to allow them to study and perform throughout conferences, workshops, master classes, lectures, performances, and other educational activities." I'm making an assumption, and tell me if I should give you more detail. I'm assuming that the boy is familiar with the Pearlman Project and what it was. And it's been here for 30 years. Just very briefly, just for the record, and as you all know, it has invited students, young teenagers, young people, to their facility here to spend the summer training and improving and working on their musical talents. These are talented students coming in the door and leave tremendously more talented and more trained. And when they leave the door, as you all probably know as well, I'm sure you do, throughout the summer, the program is opened up to the public to come for, to concerts that they, where our students perform and share in the development with young people as they master their skills. So, in all respects, I think it's almost without any doubt that we meet the criteria of an educational institution to qualify for this application to this firm that we're seeking. The second level of criteria we have to meet are your standard special permit criteria that apply to all your special permit applications. And very briefly, we submitted the standard questionnaire answer that you have in your application that is triggered on what these criteria are that we have to address. In very simple terms, the camp school has been here for 30 years. It's been in the same location for 30 years. It's been a good neighbor. It fits into the community. It's part of the community there in its location as well as in the town. So, it, the answers to the questions, for example, is the proposed use the most appropriate for this land? The answer is yes. It's not a new project. That question really pertains to a new project. It really is a part of, it's almost like a part of the nature of the site of that area of the town. If you'd like, I can go through every single criteria that we have. I know you probably have read the application or answers to them, all of which show that we meet every one of those criteria in your code. If you'd like me to take more time and go through them for the record, or I could refer you to that document, then that would be our presentation to you on the answers to the criteria we have to meet. If there are any questions on the technical nature in terms of the future plans we have and the improvements that we're proposing to do once we get the special permit, we do have our architect here. He can answer any few questions. But just very generally speaking, as we answer our, from an answer sheet, the entire septic sewer system is, will become a state-of-the-art system. The entire drainage system on the property will be state-of-the-art model compared to the 30 situation that we have there. All of the construction, everything will be up to highest standard. Need all the requirements of all the town, health department. And it will be an improvement in the environment to have those upgrades to the, to the septic system and water drainage. If anyone has any questions with me, I always kind of like to just have our president, Toby Pearlman, come and just give some more facts about the operation.
Not right now, sir. But I reserve the right to call you back up here.
I can't say that's not good for argument.
Phil, I did want to add that there was a correspondence received for Herb's 36 Rockview Point Road addressing some questions.
Okay.
Christina, I got a comment that the sound on the internet's not so loud, so people could speak up on her podium. I'm not a natural.
Hello.
Hi.
Please state your name for the record.
Toby Pearlman.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just like this because I don't know where to start. Because for me, listen, Shelter Island is the best thing that ever happened to the Pearlman Music Program. It's like a dream. It's perfect. And I'm done. I can sit down, you know? I mean, in a certain way, that's how I feel. It speaks for itself. It's, um, it's just terrific. What makes it terrific? Who are we, anyway, and what do we do? And do we do anything at all that's different than what other people do? And the answer is, I think we do a lot that is different than what other people do. For example, several people have asked me, so, you know, not so much asked me, but so, you're building. You're enlarging. No, we're not enlarging. The whole secret of success with this project has been keeping it small. So what does that mean? It means 16 fiddles, eight violas, eight cellos, and then you have the, you have the right amount for quartets. The right amount and the right combination of instruments. We don't have drums. We don't have brass and woodwinds. It's just strings. We don't even have piano. So we don't make much noise. Um, why, what is it about Shelter Island that sets it apart? Well, for me, it has a kind of magical allure to it. And it's proved, it's proved itself. We have a public who come to listen to rehearsals and concerts and so on. An enduring public. They follow the kids as they grow up and as some of them have done very well. It's very exciting. But that's not the point of the program. This is school. Most everybody who comes to this school is highly, highly gifted. They live pressure poker lives. Many don't go to school. And then they come to us and they have to make their beds and they have to help with KP and they have to learn how to be people in the world. I want to stay here and I want to build something that is, belongs, belongs here, not, not a fancy thing that belongs someplace else. I truly believe that the public here appreciate us. They know what we, they know what we do. When we have a problem, like I remember a few years ago, actually, Anna, before your time, we had a bunch of kids going over to Moscow for the Chekhovski competition. And part of what we provide and part of which, what is necessary for these students is to have the opportunity to play with their material, to make their mistakes here, safe place. So, we, we put out a call at one of the concerts. We explained, you know, we have four kids going to the Chekhovski competition, but they don't have places to play. We need, we need, we need spaces for them to play so they can find out how good they are here before they go. And, you know, we had, we had six or seven people say, you can use my house, you can use my house, that kind of involvement. I think it's touching and helpful. And one of our kids did do really well at that competition, by the way. Anyway, I'm here. You can ask me questions. I probably haven't answered anything that you wanted to know about curriculum, about how I view education. I'm very opinionated. And I can do it if you want, or I can sit down or I can just answer questions now.
Ma'am, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, under this new, if you become an educational institution, what would be the operational difference in how you operate now versus if you're granted a special permit?
No, no difference.
Ma'am, if you're going to comment, you need to come up and identify yourself.
Anna Kaplan. I'm the executive director of the Pearlman Music Program or Toby and his Pearlman. I mean, we are matching out. Yes. On plan, on all the operations. The answer is nothing changed. Absolutely nothing. We've been an educational institution since the inception of the program and we intend to keep it exactly as it's been.
If you are granted this, will this give you any additional resources or how would, how is this going to impact you as an organization?
Well, it's going to help us with this building project. So, we're, we're looking to really replace facilities in time. Many of you know, the property that we're on is a 100-year-old girls' camp. It was originally built in the 1920s. Many of the structures are made back to that time. And really, our goal was to upgrade facilities and replace in time and really adjust the designation to what it should have been all along. That's, that's the goal.
And Ms. Pearlman, you had said that you're not expanding, but I mean, there is some expansion of square footage of these buildings.
Is there? Well, we are, we are, um, the architect can step up as well. The, the short answer is the, we're actually reducing some footprint on the north parcel. That's the waterfront parcel. And we're adding some faculty cabins on the south parcel with the same, the surface space size population. So not increasing.
Okay, but my question, like, so, yeah. It says that you have it on the north parcel existing. You have 44,716 square feet of conditioned space. And you're planning to go from 44,000 to 60,000. So that, whatever, that's, that's an increase of, you know, no matter.
The reason is, yeah, the walkout basement.
Okay, and then, and then on the south parcel, going from 3,117 square feet to 9,735 square feet. So there is in fact, expansion of square footage living area.
We're adding basement floors to these buildings that would serve the community, so not additional that is needed.
My name is Lise Skolnick. I'm an architect on Sag River in New York. And I can answer some of these questions, although you were doing a good job. The north parcel, the, you're moving the dining well to a different position. And we're going to be moving the boys dorm to different positions. We're actually consolidating them to really wind up with more open space around it. But the short answer is exactly that. We're going to put basements in these buildings. And so when it comes to conditioned space, it's being added to. When it comes to lot coverage, we're not increasing.
So the lot coverage will remain the same as it currently is? Both the north and south parcels?
No, on the south parcel, we are building new cabins for, for faculty. And that's so that we don't have to rent spaces all over the island, which is quite costly.
Are all the new cabins being used? What are all the new ones being used for?
Only for faculty.
Only for faculty?
I do have poster boards of the proposed side plans, if that's helpful to show.
Sure, why not? It's.
And then it's similar to what you have.
Right, I understand. But that way, the public sees what you're talking about here.
So, so, this is the, the north parcel, the waterfront.
So we've got, these are all existing.
You know, maybe, could you stand over there and, and just so that the folks in the audience can see?
Sorry.
Well, we'd like to see it too, but. Yeah, there you go. There we go.
Do they want to share it on a screen?
Yeah, David, if you can hear us, if you can share the digital version.
Stand on the other side so the folks over here.
Oh, sure. We should have rehearsed this. Is that coming up on screen or should we just?
All right, let's, let's.
Oh, there it is. There we go.
That's the same image.
Okay. So, I mean, everybody can see this as well now.
Right, one of the things you'll notice, excuse me, is that, as I said, we're moving the boys dorm eventually to the east. And we're moving the dining hall also to the east to create kind of a courtyard among the three buildings. Right now, they're, they're very scattered. And by doing that, we open up a lot of landscape around the perimeter. But as I said, the lot coverage does not increase on this parcel, on the south parcels because of the additional faculty housing. But you know that our lot coverage is a fraction of what's permissible under the zoning.
I, I just want to make sure that we're being accurate here.
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe we want to show off the, the, the south parcel here.
Yeah, on the south parcel, there's a lot of land that's currently undeveloped and we intend to keep it that way. So we're really developing, adding the cottages where we already have a few to fill in that area.
We're upgrading everything with respect to the environmental sustainability issues. So, you know, everything that's new or refurbished will be brought up to state identity code, which presently is not handicapped accessibility to all spaces on the campus. And just, you know, as an architect, when I was brought in, my client said to me, we like everything just the way it is, but we need some things to be fixed. And so, they said, you know, don't make it look fancy. Don't make it look any different than it looks now. We just want it to work better. And so that's what we tried to do. So the character will be exactly the same as it is now. It'll just perform and operate efficiently and more comfortably.
With this redesigned layout on?
You can put that down and go, go to the lecture and that way people can see on Zoom.
On both of the north and south sides, did you reconfigure parking? And do you think you have adequate parking to handle educational piece and also any outreach that you're doing in community events?
Educational piece, we have way more parking than we would need. For the outreach, those of you who've gone to concerts there know that people park all along Shore Road and all along Sterns Point. And we're trying to alleviate that part because it's really not a safe part of the road like that. So we, we've introduced a parking area. We have 20.
Please keep it down in the audience. Thank you.
I think we have 26 spaces dedicated into the handicapped accessible spaces on the north parcel. And then I have, oh, I think it's like 41 or 44 on the south parcel. So we're greatly increasing the parking. But we're not doing asphalt parking lots. These are going to be permeable gravel parking lots so that, you know, there's no new runoff. There's no toxic weather that we have to. We're using all sustainable biofilters. And, and of course, our septic system. I would say the biggest change to the nature of this project is we're going to have four state-of-the-art bi-sseptic systems not reaching anything into the aquifer. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions right now?
Only question. When you do this project, you're going to not do it in the summer?
Right.
You're just going to work from like September to?
At the moment, the kids leave. At another moment, they come back.
And what, you figure it's a two-year project or what?
We're dividing it into phases. So phase one, we hope to accomplish this coming September through April, May of 2025. And then, if it sounds allowed, we'll go into phase two.
Okay. Well, you're going to do the parking area across the street in phase one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the program going to maintain seasonal, summer only, or is it going to be a longer season?
It's a great question. We, now actually, this coming April, in two weeks, we're running a residency for the first time in the spring because every other year, we go to Israel and this year, we couldn't go. So we're bringing Israeli kids here. And, you know, because the campus, we only have a couple of winterized buildings. We're very limited in terms of the size group that we can bring and what we can do. So there's a lot of help from the community to give us housing for faculty that we kind of scatter around the island. So possibly, we'll have opportunities to have a little more activity in the off-summer months. But, you know, we don't aspire to be a year-round school. That's not.
You make your season a little longer.
Yeah, possibly we'll have a weekend program for, you know, 10, 15 kids. We always have free concerts that go with that. We intend to keep that. It's part of our educational mission. So it serves the community and it's minimal disruption to the island life because we're contained within our campus and, you know, we don't amplify anything. So it's okay.
Thank you.
Is there a difference between the number of students you can allow to attend the camp if you get the special permit to operate as an educational institution or does that remain the same?
It remains the same. Like Toby said, it's the secret, that's, that's, the ethos of our mission is that we keep it small so that we can really know each student and have an individualized approach to their education. And it proves itself. The result is.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I just wanted to answer a question that you would ask about becoming, getting the special permit and what would that do for us or for the?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's in the record, but if it isn't, we had gotten a denial letter from the building department when we applied for building permits for some of this work. And the denial was, we should kind of come and get the special permit to be an educational institution so that this work could be done. And so that's what necessitated our coming here. And, you know, we understood the direction and that's when we certainly, you know, wanted to cooperate with you and go that route and permit from you so that we could then start this project. We can't until that happens. So that's why, that's what kind of triggered, unlike, you know, you have an established place. You're just going to do some extension out of building, but in the building department and you get a permit. You know, and it all complies with zoning and meets all the requirements of the code. We had to meet this to go forward. So that's really what triggered our coming here. No master plan, no changing our, what we function or do anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isler.
Anybody else have any questions for any of these folks who've presented here so far? Yeah, I, we may have more questions later. I feel we might get some other people weighing in here tonight. Right, thank you.
Thank you.[1730.02]
Thank you very much.
All right. So anybody in the audience like to weigh in on this application? In our in-house audience here? Yes, sir. Please, you need to come up and identify yourself.
My name is Jack Saw on like Two Prospect Avenue. We go often times to enjoy our neighbors up the road. But I just heard that the proposed development is 15,000 square feet.
Well, that's.
Roughly.
No, I mean.
Not it.
Yes, the.
I mean, it's not small. They're moving up to one side of the road that is largely undeveloped as it is now. And so.
Go ahead. I think that the increase on the south parcel, that's what you're talking about, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's going from 3,117 square feet to 9,735 square feet. You know, the, the, that's just what, those are the numbers.
Right, right. And so in total, there's some additional footage that's being added too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's not insignificant, needless to say.
It's not.
For those of us who live in the area. And the council for that was going to, I guess, note some particular criteria that has to be met for, at least according to his viewpoint, justify his request for the zoning permission to go ahead and develop this land. And I'm sort of new to this, so I'd love to hear what those 10 criteria are, if the board would so indulge me and if not, maybe make it available to the public to read.
I think we can get a special permit application for whatever, just to see the.
Yeah, see what the reason is for this not insignificant expansion.
Well, I mean, that's, that's not going to give you the reason for the expansion.
No, I know.
It's going to give you the, basically the questions that have to be answered in the course of our investigation.
I think they need to be answered and I would like to see what the answer is.
There are applications on the website that has their answers.
Okay.
Excellent.
So I'm sort of new to this, but I'll just close by saying, you know, 15,000 square feet is not significant. Somebody does allow, you will state the.
Right, so what I would say is that, you know, so on the north parcel, which is a waterfront parcel.
Yeah.
They are not having an increase of lot coverage, but they are finishing basements in the new buildings. So the lot coverage, the square footage of the buildings on the lot on the north parcel is supposed to stay the same according to the testimony that we've gotten here tonight.
Papers have been filed.
What's that?
And.
Yeah, right. And on the south parcel, there is an increase because there's going to be some new cabins built for faculty.
Right. We happen to be on the south side, so that's really sort of what I'm concerned about. And what is the expansion proposed right now? Is it five or six new units and not cars? I think that's what I saw, six or seven units. It's not insignificant in the traffic.
But on the amount of land they have there is very minute.
No, I get it, but for those of us who live in that area.
Well, you're still going to have plenty of land for you and them.
You know, but it changes though.
So it's, it's nine new buildings over there.
Okay. And so just for my attention, at the close of this tonight, then what happens?
You'll see. Either we will. So we'll, we'll have to see how this plays out tonight. We will have two basic options here at the end of tonight. The first would be to close the hearing and leave it open to written comments and then have a work session next month where we discuss it among ourselves and come to some sort of judgment on it. The other option would be to leave the hearing open and continue it next month. So we'll see if, you know, we'll see. We'll see how it goes tonight.
No, I appreciate the answer and thank you, but it's not insignificant.
Anyone else wish to weigh in? Yes, sir. Please step up to the lecture.
I'll do it again.
No. Unless you really want to.
I just wanted to point out in answer to your question.
Sure.
So there are six existing cabins now and we're proposing a total eventually of 15, but the lot coverage allowable is 222,000 square feet. Our total lot cover is 11,000 square feet.
No, but my point was the expansion is not insignificant. You went from six to.
Around 28 years.
Got it.
I mean, the density is, is going to be quite.
We're like, we're not, this isn't a, this isn't an audience debate, all right? This isn't the way this works here. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to weigh in? You state your name for the record, Jim.
Jim Lang. I live at 10 Prospect, right next door on the south side. So I just have a question about where these cabins on the south side are going to go. What's the layout?
Can we, are they truly visible there?
Yeah. David, could you pull up the south parcel on the screen?
cabins are in this area. These will be in the same area. Some of the lighthouses right here, and if I want to build a secondary structure, it would be right next to it. So is this the only place that you can put these cabins? You can't put them back here? And you just can't put on a disturb bed over here? It's not, not impossible, right? We want to consolidate them as much as possible just so that.
How close are they going to be on the?
The closest is 52 feet, it looks like, from the property line.
So my question is just, are there other options where they can be moved somewhere else on the property? Three or four of them, it looks like, are going to be right next to my property line.
How deep does your property go there, Jim?
My property goes like this. In here, so I got right here. This is my line. So I'm 25 feet back here and whatever the boundary up in the front. So just my backyard, those cabins are right next to me where it was been worked. 60 years. So I would just ask for a little consideration when we relocate them and I don't get. There's plenty of land. So that's, that's my concern. Other than that, they're very nice.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
For those of you that don't know, Jim Lang is going to be the newest proprietor of the restaurant at Goat Hill this summer.
I just have one more second.
Yes, sir.
The questions that are being asked about how this preference has been increased and whether property will be developed. Or, you know, questions that should be looked at, no question about it. But all of the plans, and these are plans, these are, you know, we're not, it's not a site plan kind of review.
No, it absolutely is not that.
No. And the issue here is to, the, whatever increase ever happens, it's a compliance with zoning because it meets the requirements. We have a 50-foot setback around the whole development. Yes, there may be people that are on the other side of the property line in some of these properties, but that's the zone here. And that's what the town board has decided is a good setback for this area. And just to go very briefly, when I, you know, look at the criteria that this board is considering. Is, is the proposed use the most appropriate use? We're talking about use here and that factor. And it's an existing use here. That's been here for 30 years. That's not changing whatsoever. So that's, that factor doesn't really come into play. Will the use be detrimental to surrounding property values? I haven't heard anything that that's a concern.
Well, I think that Mr. Lang just expressed that concern maybe a little bit.
Well.
I think I just, you know.
For that factor to be developed, you know, in a public hearing, somebody has to show that it's going to happen, not just advocate.
He expect, he expressed his concern, right?
Okay. Will it cause overcrowding of land or undue concentration of population is the next one. As you said, this is a very large parcel or two parcels. The use and the increase of coverage, as you heard from our architect, is nowhere near what's, I mean, it's a fraction of what you could build on this property as it's right as any double, you know, double A zone where you could self-divide it, you could put houses on it. This is a special permit for an educational use, but the owner has a right to build it in conformity with zoning. And that would change.
Absolutely.
Permit.
Yep.
So that, that factor, I think, is in favor of the permit application. Is the site suitable for location elsewhere in the town? I think the answer is pretty obvious. That's not going to happen. There probably is an acreage to you to do it. Is the proposal harmonious with the character, the existing and probable development of the uses in the vicinity? Now, that's a key one. I understand that. And some of the concern about, you know, that close to my property line could touch that issue. However, this property and the use of this property has been here for 30 years in harmony with the residential community it's in. This is not, whether a new building may be 50 feet from a property and conforming with zoning. It's still, the character of this project is harmonious. By definition of life, we've lived it for 30 years. Is the proposed use accessible for fire and emergency? That's not affected here by whatever, by getting this special permit. It's all. Is the proposed use unreasonable near a church, school, theater, recreation area or other places in the family? That's not a relevant factor here. Will the proposed use interfere with the established uses in the neighborhood? We're an established use in the neighborhood. This question, that factor is if you're going to do something new in the neighborhood. Are the driveways and sidewalks adequate to assure public safety and avoidance? We've been having public concerts and we have parking and access. It's not being changed at all from the existing use. Are there adequate facilities for the treatment, removal and discharge of sewage and refuse and other effluent? That's a factor that we're really addressing from taking a 30-year system and putting a state-of-the-art innovative alternative sewer systems here, which is a major improvement for the community and the surrounding property owners. Will the proposed use cause odors, dust, light, noise? We heard there's no drumming, so I guess the issue is no noise. Will the proposed use impact the aquifer? And uses and changing whatsoever from what it was? Is there enough wall street parking? And the answer is if the proposal creates parking for all staff and additional parking for visitors and without any undue overdevelopment. What buffers and screening are necessary to protect the adjacent properties? This is the last factor. And the answer is the 50-yard setback for an educational use will be enhanced by maintaining existing vegetation within the setbacks, which currently serve as natural water source screening and replanting of any disturbed areas within and beyond the setbacks, including trees. So those are the, in your application, the factors that we are addressing here. And I didn't go through it on my first stand-up here because I wanted to see if there were issues with this. But now that there are, I'm sorry, I'm taking some of your time just to walk through these. And you'll see when evaluating these things that there is not an adverse impact from giving us the special permit so that we can do some modest expansion to the project.
Thank you. Jim Lang, can I get you to just come up for just one sec? Because I would kind of want to address your, your concern. So Jim, their building's the closest one that I can see on your side would be about 52 feet from the property line. And your setback requirement for an accessory building would be 30 feet. So in the end, you'd be separated by about 80 feet at, you know, the closest possible thing. Just to, just to clarify, just so that you got the numbers in your head there, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, my concern is have they, why right there when they have that huge piece of property?
Yep. I get it.
But he's at the bottom.
Okay, and we'll, we'll see if maybe they'll consider doing something like that. Okay.
I don't, you know, I'm not against them doing this.
Yeah.
I just, you know, if there is this huge piece of land that they reiterated, well, you know, I build houses. I know it's not a big deal to plot it out somewhere else on this property.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
I'm James Cummings. I'm a facilities manager for the program, music program for the last four years. I'd like to point out for everyone, as we look at the poster boards, that the south parcel.
Can we pull them up on the screen here again, just for the people out in Zoom land?
South parcel is close to 20 acres. It's more than twice as big as the north parcel. Okay, the north parcel with all those buildings on it, right, is less than the size of the parcel in the back. And when you go down Sterns Point Road, the frontage is even smaller because it expands behind the Pizlaka property and extends all the way back to the properties on West Neck Road coming in from.
Harborview.
Harborview. So there's over 12 acres undeveloped land that will be preserved, so to speak, by the Perlman's in their design. So I just wanted to point that out because the impact, it may look like we're going to add a lot on the back, but we're not adding a lot. The thing that I, that, that everyone should know and is that the big thing that I see is that the off-street parking that would be brought in on the south parcel, adjacent to Sterns Point Road, is the answer to keeping vehicles from being in the roadway. And so I just wanted to point those two things out. Also, as the educational use, the setback is increased to 50 feet. As a residential, it's less than that. So by going to an educational use, all new buildings will have to be further back from the sidewalk.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Anyone else here in the live audience wish to comment? No, all right, let's open it up to Zoom land here. Christina, you got any hands up out there? None? So what do you folks think? Should we leave it open? Gather some more info or should we close it up here?
You can close a subject to written.
You ready to do that?
I would move on that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd move on that too.
Okay, so we're going to close the hearing, leaving it open to written correspondence. And so what's the date, Christina, of our next?
I think it's, the work session is the 17th, so I think.
24th is a year.
Yeah, so it will be 10.
So we leave it open to written correspondence that can be received up until April 10. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. William Johnston?
Yes.
Thomas Graffanino?
Yes.
Lisa Crackler?
Yes.
And Phil Diorio votes yes. Thank you. Okay, so we have another hearing on the agenda. It's 56A Cartwright Road. Christina, will you read the notice?
Hearing on the application of James and Cheryl Keller, owners of 56A North Cartwright Road, Portrano, New York, which is located in John Senior Shore Overland District and is more specifically described on the Substant Act map at 700-8-3-67.2. The applicant is seeking to supersede variance in granted first and here field number 15-2,3022 from Shelter Island Town Code, Section 133-10B5B to hold an 8.7 feet side yard setback on the Saturn property line when 10 feet is required to conserve the first floor addition. And additionally, to hold an 8.4 feet side yard setback to the Saturn property line where 10 is required for a deck extension due to a changing, changing scope of the project from an addition to complete rebuild. Further, a special permit is required for bulk intrusion into the non-conforming area.
Hi there.
Hi. Would you like to present, ma'am?
Yes, I would totally.
We don't have an affidavit of posting for the property.
So what, explain that to me now.
So for this board to have jurisdiction, three criteriums need to occur. One is that the property is properly posted. One is that the property is properly posted. One is that it's published in a paper. And another one is that is proper mailing. So there has been evidence provided that the property was indeed posted. However, Section 13334D requires that the applicant shall file an affidavit with the zoning board that he has complied with the provisions of this section. Failure to submit such affidavit shall result in adjournment of the public hearing. Now, they have a non-notarized affidavit, therefore, we cannot accept it because it has to be notarized the day of the hearing because it has to show that it's been continuously posted through the hearing. So since we do not have that signed.
A notary here or? I mean, that's, I mean, really, that's.
That's my question.
That does, just because, I mean, in the, in the end, what that means is that the person who is signing the form is in fact that person, that's what the notary does, right?
Correct.
What's that?
Is there any notary?
I don't think, I don't believe that we have a notary.
Oh, we met two of the three criteria.
Ma'am, ma'am, does this?
It is a technicality, but it is the law.
Right, you know, I, I think we're going to have to come back next month on this. I mean, that's, I can't, you know, this.
Can I just, can I just suggest? I mean, you can correct me if you, I'm Cheryl Keller, Broadway, co-owner of the. Is there a way that we do discuss it provisionally?
No, it's not, it's not like, that's.
Why is?
It's just, it's not, it's not the way that things work. We don't do things provisionally, so.
You probably not take the final vote on this tonight, any.
That, that's correct, but we, if, if we can't legally hear it, we can't legally hear it. That's, I, you know, we, we can't adjust the law at some point.
Well, I understand, I mean, I hope you understand that the, that we submitted a 100-page application for the second time in a year. It's, it's very onerous, the process, and having missed.
But what I would say is that, what I would say is that if you, if, look, it's, the, the process is laid out there for you.
Of course.
Okay, and this, I, I just, I don't see how we disregard the law and have your hearing tonight. I just, I don't, I don't know how we can do that.
I mean, I feel like just hearing my prepared part.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's, it's, while I would love, look, we, we have a lot of stuff coming our way soon, right? While I would love to clear the deck, so to speak, tonight's not the night. It's not going to happen here.
This is protecting you as well because a neighbor, say if you do get this grant, doesn't like it, can knock it out on an article.
And the only neighbor that's here.
Based, based on this reality.
I mean, we have one neighbor here supporting our application.
You don't know who's a crap, like, I'm just saying, we cannot do it, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, we.
If any one of us up here was, were a notary, we'd be the first to sign.
Yeah, you cannot do it, you have to send an applicant.
Well, actually, we couldn't. I'm just saying, to move the breath.
Before this, I mean, it's really that Cheryl is showing us, and that we own the property, right? That's the notaries.
No, 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 it's.
No.
No, no, no.
And we're swearing.
No, 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 that's not it.
What do we know, right?
It's, it's the person who posted the property has to notarize today that it was continuously up the whole time. That's, that person has to sign that document and have it notarized.
This strike.
Should have been done today.
Just as a citizen of Shelter Island.
Sure, why not?
Okay. So this, this process is, it's almost been Kafkaesque. And now we come here finally after preparing this 100-page document and spending hours and tens of thousands of dollars and paying fines for what is a modest addition to a home one foot off the property line. And it's come back another month. It did, forgive me, but it seems odd to me, it does seem Kafkaesque.
Your agent was told that it had to be notarized today.
I'm going to fire her right now. I am, you're fired. And now, as a citizen of Shelter Island, just as a homeowner here, I, you, you couldn't make an indulgence that the form that was posted for 30 years and it's been there for 30 days. You can't do that?
No.
Can't do that.
Was the law.
I, believe me, I would love to get this hearing heard, done, and decided one way or another, however it plays out.
Yeah.
See, that's not going to happen tonight.
Well, it may, actually.
No, I can promise you that it's not happening.
You can promise me that. Because let me, can I, can I continue?
No, I'm, I'm, my patience is wearing thin.
All right, let me just make one last comment. It's like, since I, it seems suspiciously odd to me that we can't go forward, then at least get a hearing and discuss the project. Okay, that's the law, I'm going to hide behind that, then.
We're going to what, hide behind the law?
We're going to use that.
Fade the law.
I, I would advise that we cease.
Yeah.
Close the meeting.
Okay, can I have a most and a closing meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. I would like to hear your hearing. I can't.